My plan for today is to, I have four examples. Okay, I have four, let me just type it, it's gonna be easier to type. I have four examples. I have a singleton design pattern example, which is, I forgot what it is now, but anyways, I have it pre-typed out. I forgot the actual thing, what was it? I forget what it is now, but it's okay. So there's a singleton design pattern, it's pretty short, doesn't really matter. Then I have the next one, which is the composite. Is it compo- that design pattern? Okay? The exact examples I chose is, oh yeah, this is a set. Okay, so I have an example about sets there. I have a state design pattern example, which is about like a player in the game. And then I have a observer, which is about like a YouTube, YouTube channel with subscribers. So since it looks like, based on the like outline of the exam, what was given to us, it seems like a lot of it, I don't know what that is. It seems like a lot of what we're gonna be asked for is like coding stuff. So like, based on, let me just read the announcement, make sure I'm saying things properly. So the test will consist of four questions that involve code writing, two questions that do not involve code writing. So four questions that involve code writing. And I think it's important to get a good idea of all of these design patterns. So my plan for today is to go through, you know, designing some software for each of these design patterns, so I have one example for each. And we're just gonna make it from scratch and just, I'm gonna show how we're implementing the design pattern in this and how the design patterns affecting all this. And I'll draw some diagrams and all that. So that's pretty much my plan for today. And then if that doesn't take two hours, we can take a look, some people sent me some questions to go over, so we can take a look at those after, but that's if we have time, so. Yeah, there's that. Any questions before we get going and starting on the singleton design pattern? Okay, I'm going to close most of these, cause I don't know why I have, still have my flight test lab one stuff open here, so let me close most of this. So this course, you know, there's not that many practice problems that I find, right? It's kind of hard to find that. So, okay, there we go, I think that's everything now, and then I want the okay, that's good. Navigation, where did I put all my projects now? There we go. And the first one. Yeah, okay, there we go, that was the first one. Okay, so I think I'm ready to go. I'm ready to start with the, with the first one, it's this one, can I move it to another window, hopefully? Yes, I can, perfect, okay, so I can just copy off of there. So we are gonna start with a, we're gonna start with our singleton example, so we're gonna, you know, design some software. I am recording by the way, in case anyone wants to ask me if I'm recording. Thank you for, if anyone thought that, but I am recording. So singleton design pattern, my idea for this one is that we have some sort of government. Okay, there's some sort of government class. So let me try to draw this, so it's a government class. It has a private year started. Okay, let me maybe try to draw this a little bit better, like a little accurately. Guess I'll try to draw the UML diagram here, pretty accurately. So there is our government. Govern- and, okay, it has a private int year started. Started, okay, which is an int. It has a string called title, private string called title. Okay. And then it has a, well, it has a static instance variable, right? A private static instance variable called instance. Right? Instance, oops. And I won't do the UML diagrams for all of them at the start, maybe for the rest I'll do after, but just one, this one's pretty simple, so it's one class, so I'll just do this. Instance, which is a, which is a government object. So of course that's going upside, but that says government. And then we have the, the methods, right, the methods. So the one that makes it a singleton, which is our public static get instance. Instance. Okay. Which will return, so it's a method, which will return a government object. So let me just do this. Govern- ment object. And then I have get year started and get, get title, but I'll just write that as just, I'll just say get, get year and get title. Get title. Okay. So again, I won't do the UML diagram for all of them, but this one was just, this was just simple here. So let's try to implement this, this thing and using a singleton design pattern. So the point of the singleton design pattern is that I only want one government to be created here, right? Like let's say we're running some sort of software for the, for the country. There should only be one instance of the government. So let's try that, here, I have this, I'm going to, I'm gonna do this in a new project. Okay, so, oh, sorry, new project, I'll call this live. If anybody wants the code after, I can, I can write the code after, like send the code, but that's up to you guys. So I will create a new Java class and I will call this government. Govern- it. Okay, and I will just make it all part of the package, I'll say live. Okay, it opened here for some reason. Can I make it like this? Okay. So in the government class, right, like I said in the diagram, we want to just have some private variables, like I said, so it's gonna be private. What did I call it? Private int year started. Year started. Okay, I want to have a private string, which is title. And I want to have a private static government. Govern- ment. Govern- ment. Which is a, called instance, right? And so this is what's part of the actual singleton design pattern is that you have to have some sort of static variable that keeps track of the instance of government that you've created. Okay, so now, yeah, we're gonna have some sort of public government, some sort of constructor, right? But at the moment, let's just focus on the actual singleton design stuff for now, right? So we're gonna have some sort of constructor, but I need to have a get instance method. That's the kind of the point of the singleton stuff. So I'm gonna have a static, public static, it's gonna return a government. Should have tried to easier words, use the easier word to spell than government. And it's gonna be called get instance. Okay, and so the point of this is that we ask, you know, if instance equals null, right? So if our instance variable right now is null, which it is to initialize with, then we just set instance equal to new government. This is where we create a thing. And importantly, this should be the only place that you need, that you want to have access to initialize the government. So you want the constructor to actually be private. Okay, so there's essentially three parts, well, let's, let's just finish this quickly. The last part is just return instance. There's essentially three parts to being a singleton design, so this is part one. A private constructor. Part two. And then having this method is your part three. Right, of just being a singleton design. So now this code is a singleton design, but let's try to make it actually like do something, right? So I'll create some, I'll create some, just I think getters, let's just use getters for this. So I'll just say, insert code getter for year started and string, so there's our thing, okay, but maybe I'll move that. Not there. So now I have just some getters for this, which is just convenient to have. And then I will also want to just, you know, actually put something in the government part. So we wanna, you know, have some way to create some sort of year started, set some title and something like that, right? So let's say in the, how I did it in the code that I did before is I created, I just took, like, I took some user input. I thought that would be just a good time to also, since this is a pretty simple project, like this class is pretty simple, let's just also take user inputs. I'll say scanner, I have to import the package, so scanner scanner equals new scanner. And we have to say system.in, which just shows that this scanner object is going to be taking in user input from the keyboard. And then just system.out.out. I'll just say, what did I say? Enter the title of the government, enter the title of the government. Right, do that first, and then I'm going to say that this dot title, I think I could just say title, actually. Question? No, I think somebody has their mic on. Check your mics, everybody. COE five twenty-eight, yes, I should have this chat open. Ah, can I zoom in on the NUPD project? That's a good question, yes, is that, is that an issue that people can't see? Let's see, with tools, let's see. View toolbar. I can't just scroll for some reason, it's alt scroll wheel, okay, okay, thank you, perfect, yes.
I guess you can, yeah.
Yeah, there you go, I got it, yeah, thanks. Okay, people can see now probably. How about I make this, make this down?
It looks much better now.
Good, sounds good, thank you for letting me know, thank you for letting me know, and thank you for the tip about alt scroll wheel, I didn't know that. Okay, so I'm just going to, you know, we want the title of the government, so I'm just gonna say scanner dot next int. Right, which will just take it, oh no, sorry, not next int, next line. Cause that's gonna be the next line that's put in, and then I also just wanna do the same thing, but this time I'm going to, you know, say please enter the year started. Right, and this time I'll say next int. Oh, sorry, this dot year started. Okay, so just a way to get some sort of input here, and that's pretty much it. There is our class constructed, that is a singleton design pattern because, but the singleton part is just this, and I just wanted to show you that, you know, you, you don't just have to have only the singleton stuff, like there is some other functionality obviously that you put into the code. So you have this, you have this, you have the fact that it's private, and you have the fact that you have a get instance method. And, and so there's no other way to create a government class, right? Except by this get instance method. So at this point, we can just say, we can just try something, so public static void main string arts. Hey, just making a main file, and let's just do it here, I, I created, I'll just copy and paste this, there's no point in me re-typing this. So there, here's some test code we can use. Just bring this back. So we create some sort of government G, right, using the get instance method. That's the only way to create a government, to access the government object, right? Is use the get instance method. And then from here, I just print, you know, G dot get title, G dot start year, like get year started, right? And then I say, okay, a different government B, but the only way I can create a government object, remember, is by using this get instance method. So I do it again, and then I print the same thing, but with B now, right, with the government B. And when I run this, you should see it's the same thing twice. So I'm gonna say run file. There we go, enter the title of the government. Enter the year started, that'd be great if I knew that, I don't know, seventeen eighty. I have no idea, anyways, this is Canada seventeen eighty, Canada seventeen eighty, twice. So you can see that the B, the B, sorry, yeah, the G and the B objects, like these reference variables, are pointing to the same thing, right? Even though they're different, and because they got them from the same way. If we modify G, will its modifications be passed through B? Yes, because there's, there's only one government. So it doesn't matter how many reference, like pointers you have to it, right? There's only one government class. So yes, if we modify G, its modifications will be passed. It's not mutable though, right? I, I've created this as an immutable class. But, but, yeah, I think, is there anything that's mutable? No, it's all private and there's no setters, so, yeah, it's, it's immutable. But yes, if there was some mutable part to it, then yes. Okay, there you go, that's the example of the singleton one, not super complicated, right? So, you know, but feel free, if you have any questions, let me know. There's some pings that I missed here, where is a ping that I missed? Where is it? Oh no, it's, it's just the two that people said just now, okay. Any questions about the singleton design pattern? Well, I have a sip of my water. One person's typing, so I'll just let them finish, but, yeah. So we implemented this. All this time. Okay, looks like they're done typing, okay, so composite will be next. So my idea for composite, I'm not gonna go into like, you know, I'm not gonna draw the UML diagram at the second, but we have a, we have a set class, right? Well, I guess I can go a little bit into the UML diagram, just to, just to make sure that we know what's going on here. So let me actually open my notes, just so I can make sure I'm saying the right thing here. Oh yeah, and as always, you know, my notes are available at my website, twofour.ca slash notes, right? So you can visit there and I have notes for this course that are updated until the midterm content. So in general, a composite looks like this, I will show which one I did, let me make sure I'm doing the right one here. Let me get my composite files here. I did a set component. Where is the rest of them? Set. And did I close it? No, oh yeah, it's right here, the one that's open, okay. Okay, so we have three classes for this one. Yeah, and do I have a client? Did I make a client for this? Okay, so the, the structure that we're gonna be using from the notes looks like this, so it's essentially the second generic structure. So this is the kind of like, not specified to the example that I'm doing. So you essentially have some client interacting with this, this is the main part. So the point of the composite method, composite design pattern, is you can have these composite objects, right? Which either contains other, contain other composite objects or leaves, right? So some sort of just like final thing. So the best way to understand this is like a folder, right? It's like a folder on your computer, right? Can hold like actual files, I'll just say that's a file, right? Or other folders, and those folders can hold files, right? And we want to be able to say some operation is being used uniformly here, right? So I can call, I can call, you know, get size, like this is the example that the teacher did. So I'm, I'm not gonna use this example as my actual code. But you can call something like get size on a folder, and it will just ask get size for all of its children. And so then since, so if you call get size on this, it'll get the size of this, it'll get the size of this, but calling get size on that folder will just again cause this to happen, right? So essentially, the point is, is you wanna be able to call certain methods on objects, on leaves, and composite objects in the same way. You kind of don't really want to particularly care if there are composite objects or leaves, right? You just want to be able to do it. And this generic method too is, does that a little bit better. Less safe, but does it a little bit better, so. There's that. Okay, so this is how we're gonna code the, this one here. So the way it works, I don't think I made a client, I'm just gonna check if I made a client. You don't have to have a client. Set. No, it looks like I did make a client, cause I don't see any main method here. Yeah, I, I made a client then, let me just see. My code, is it? Oh yeah, I think it's called client composite, there you go, there it is. So the client is essentially just a class. Let me just do this here. So we have a client composite, which is the one that I created, right? Which is just has the main method, right? So client composite. So we won't do the exact UML diagram for this, just to give you an idea, this is just to give you an idea of what it looks like. So the client composite is using, right? A component abstract, so this is an abstract class, right? Which I'm just gonna call set component. Okay, and a set component is either going to be a number, right? So we're just gonna imagine sets, like math sets, that either, you know, have numbers in them, right? Or there are, you know, composites, which are just like, you know, like folders, which are just sets, right? So a set component is either a number or another set. And so a set, right, can contain either a number, multiple numbers, multiple sets, single set, doesn't matter. Contain some combination of set components. And so then I think we, at this point, we say, we do a little triangle here. Oops, let me just do it like this. Right, so we say like this, which is the aggregation relationship, which is to say that one set, one set can have zero to many set components, right? You can have zero or many set components. And again, the client is really just here to interact with this, it's just to be have some sort of access point here. This is where the main file is, that's the whole point, there's no main, there's no main method in all this. So again, we're talking about, in this example, we're gonna be talking about sets, like number sets. Like when I say sets, I mean like, like the discrete math sets that we do, like that. Okay, so let's go ahead and code this. So the way I do this, I'm just gonna open up a new, I'll just open up a new file. So we'll start with the, yeah, let's see what we start with. So let's start with creating a set component, right? A set component. So a set component, oh yeah, I'm sorry, and then the operation, the operation that I'm gonna support through all of this, right? So again, we, we have to have some sort of operation. Up or ration. That we're gonna support through all this is sum, right? Sum of some set component. So when you call the sum of the second component, if you call it on a set, it'll just add together all the numbers. If you call sum on a number, it'll just return itself, right? Cause the sum of itself is itself. Okay, so I guess we'll start with set component, or, we can start with number, actually. Let's maybe start with the concrete one, so the two things that are gonna be in this composition, right? So maybe we'll start with that. So I'll start with a Java class, and it'll be called number. And it's part of the same package. So here it is, okay, so in the number class, could you zoom in occasionally when you're on the code, please? Yeah, 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 sorry, did I? Let me open this up like this, so it's like this. If I forget, just remind me, and I will zoom in, of course. Okay, so a number, right? Is going to be extending, so it extends set component, right? Because set component is the kind of like parent class for the numbers and the sets, right? But we'll deal with that in seconds, an error, but doesn't matter. So anyway, so there's gonna be a private int number, right? Because a number has an actual value, which is, we'll just call it an integer for now. And then I'm going to just make some sort of constructor for it, so that we can create a number with some sort of value, right? So I just said, I just said int number. This dot number equals number. So there we go, now we can create number objects that have some sort of particular value. But remember, we also want to have this. Well, actually, for now, this is fine, but we can just leave it like this. This is pretty much all we would wanna create in a number. We're gonna add to this when we have to deal with what exactly is in a set component. But for now, this is just the basic outline of a number is just a number, like an int. And you can just, you can assign it by creating it through the constructor, a public constructor. Let's try set now, I think. Yeah, okay, let's try set, so a set. Again, we're gonna add to all this code after, but I'm gonna create a new object here. So live class, okay, I'm gonna call it a set. Set dot Java already exists, is it, why does set dot Java already exist? I mean, it does, of course, but, oh, I'm in the wrong package here, if I, I go here and I say class, and I say set, yes, there we go, we're good. Okay, it's just cause I have, cause I coded this all before, so it thinks I was in the wrong package there. Okay, so a set is just gonna be an array list of set components, that's all it's gonna be, right? So we need to import java dot util dot array list. And I'm just gonna create an array list, so a private private array list. This, and it's only gonna have set components, right? Oh, sorry, I'm gonna zoom in, so you can see, set component. Okay, and we're gonna, well, actually, that's actually all we're gonna do here for now, right? Because when I create a set, that's when I wanna make the actual array list. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna make a constructor, so public set. And when I, when I create the, sorry, I have to give it a name, so I called it elements, elements. So what I'm gonna do now is just, you know, say this is elements. When I create the thing, when I create the actual class, an instance of the class, we're just gonna say elements equals new array list. And we only want to have set compo- components going to. Yes, that looks right to me, just comparing to what I said here. Oh, and I guess I need to have that here too. Does the composite need to extend the component? I always forget which name means what, so let me look back at the diagram. The composite needs to extend the component, yes, the composite needs to extend the component. Because the composite is made up of components, so let me, let me write this here, right? The composite, this is the composite. Right, this is the com- composite. So the composite is, there's an aggregation relationship, saying that the composite is made up of set components, which are either other sets, other composites, or numbers. Which in, which is comparing up here, it's composite and leaves, right? But in the case we have here. Yeah. No problem. Okay, so carrying on with this one here, so, you know, it's telling me that I have an issue. I have a set components, right? That's not something I've done yet. So I've just created like what a set is, a set and as an array, as an array list, a number object is just an integer. But now let's actually go ahead and create what a set component is, right? So we've done, we've done the basic outline of what these two are, we're gonna edit them, because they have to inherit some methods from here. But now let's go ahead and say what a set component is. So I'm going to create, I'm gonna go actually right-click right here, live code, new. Wait, shouldn't set extend the set component then? Yes, it should. Set. Thank you, yes. It's extends. There you go. So now I'm going to make a new Java class, this Java class is gonna be set component. Right, and this is gonna be an abstract class, so set component, yeah. So this is going to be a public abstract class, set component, so we don't wanna ever create a set component. The only thing that actually exists is a number or a set, right? But in the set component, right, we are gonna just have a bunch of abstract methods in here. So the first abstract method you wanna have in your set component, it doesn't matter first, but like the first thing we're gonna put is the one that's supported, right? So the, the sum method is uniformly supported by all set components, right? So I'm gonna make that, I'm gonna say a public abstract, not void, int, is it int? Uh, int sum. Okay, so I'm gonna just say that all set components should have the ability to be called upon, you know, the sum command. And then there is, you know, some other, there are some other things we need, right? Just dealing with these kinds of things. So here, okay, what I'm starting to say is, we have these child, children managing classes is what they're called. Children managing, sorry, they shouldn't say classes, children managing methods. I'm gonna fix that after, children managing methods. Right, and so adding a component, removing a component, getting a component, or getting a component count, these are all just things that seem to be, just basically, you, you include it when you're talking about, when you're using the composite design pattern. You include these managing classes. I don't actually know if it's a, if it's like a right or wrong requirement to have them, but I, I think I would just, you should just put them. So we'll do that, we will include these, these should be in the set component. Let me just put it here, right? So we need to have all of the things I just mentioned, we need to have a public abstract void, which is add component, which takes in a set component comp, I'll just call it. We need to have a public ab- abstract void remove component, remove component, okay, which will also take in a set component comp, okay? And then I need to have a public abstract set component, so this one is the is the get component method, this is really just returning an, sorry, it's not returning an index. This is returning the set component, which is at index i, right? And public public final one abstract int get component. Eight, which takes in oh, sorry, get component count. So this just returns how many components we have in this thing. Coding, yes, that's true, we are, we are coding here, computer engineers. So, yeah, so here's our abstract, these are all these things. And remember, these methods can only be called upon by, let me find it, by the composite. Now technically, they, like, they literally can be called upon by the leaves, but you're not supposed to let that happen, which is why this is an unsafe way of doing it. Now you can also put these methods only in here, right? And make them not abstract, but then you have to, what's the, what's the word? You have to like force them to be the data type. Late binding, late binding, you have to, there's another word that I'm trying to say, I forget now. But, yeah, you have to force them to be a certain data type, the composites. Cast them, you have to typecast them to be composite before you do it. You have to typecast the component to be a composite. Okay, but we'll do it like this, because it's easier to do it like this. So here we have, that's it, that's the entirety of our set component. So a set component is just a class that supports all of these methods here. Now, this is the one that's uniformly supported, and these are called the children managing method, I keep saying classes. Is the question? No? Someone just got their mic off. Check your mics, everybody, check your mics. I'll just, just turn it, I'll just turn them down. Okay, so okay. Do you wanna? I see all this looks hard. Thank you Manuel, I don't know if Manuel's still here, but thank you Manuel.
I am.
Oh hey, how's it going?
I wanted to join you guys.
Learned some coding? Switched back to computer?
No, 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 I gotta do, I gotta do my shit, but.
I understand.
Nice seeing it.
Yeah.
Bye bye everyone, good luck, I love you.
Bye bye, bye man. Okay. Okay, is the, okay. He did sound tired. It sounds like a mechanical engineering problem. Yeah.
You know, I was about to say, I'll say you problem still.
Uh, Ethan asked a question, why can't we put children managing methods in the set class? Children managing methods. We can put children managing methods in the set class. We can't put them in the leaf class. Uh, leaf class. It doesn't make sense to put children managing methods in the leaf class, right? Uh, because they're like, uh, the leaf is just like a number. It doesn't make sense to add a component to a number. Or get a component from a number. Uh, why are we putting them in the component abstract class instead of just the set class? Uh, the reason we do this is because I can then say, I, when I declare a variable, which is of type component, right? I can then just say component dot add component or something like that, right? If I didn't have this here, I would have to say typecast that variable from component to composite or to set, right? And then call add component. But if I, if I have it in both, if I have it in the abstract class and I have it in the composite, then I don't have to do any typecasting. I don't have to do any typecasting. But it runs the risk of you by accident calling add component on a leaf. But like, if you know, like, that's not going to happen by accident. Uh, but you can't have an object of type component because it's an abstract class. Yeah, so you're going to declare the pointer to be pointing to a, uh, the reference variable to be point, referencing a component, right? But that's actually going to be either a composite or a leaf, either a set or a number, right? So I'm going to declare variables that are set components, but they're actually going to be either sets or numbers. And I'm going to want to be able to call upon them, these children managing classes. Just call upon the set component, children managing class. Right, that's the, that's the idea. Okay, um, so let's continue here. Uh, that's it. That's all for set component. That's completely done. We have our children managing classes and the actual one supported method. Let's go back now. Of course, the other, uh, pieces of the code aren't working anymore, right? So, uh, number, let's see what the issue is. A number is not abstract and does not override get component, set component, da, 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 da. So the, the way you do this here is, uh, you know, you can either make it. Throw an error or generally you can just make it return nothing, right? So that's, that's kind of, and this is how, like she actually did it in the code. Like, I'm not just making this up. This is how she did it in the lecture. Is if you have a situation like this where, you know, number now has to have some sort of concrete implementation of add component, remove component, get component, get component count, all that. But again, it doesn't actually make sense to call that on a, on a leaf, on a number. So what you do is you just make them, you'll see what I mean. Public, like, so let's put an implementation that doesn't do anything. Add component, right? This will take in a set. Component comp, right, and it will do nothing. That's, you just make it do nothing. Um, and so now, you know, we're satisfying the fact that this is inheriting from set component, but it doesn't actually do anything when you say add component. So in another way to say this is like, you just like, the user shouldn't call add component, remove component on a number because it just, like, we, we don't make any promises. Like, that's like the, like the procedural abstraction thing. Like, we don't make any promises about what it's going to do if you do this stuff. So it doesn't matter what I choose here. So I'm just going to say public void. Remove component. It's also going to take in a set component comp. It will also do nothing. Public, uh, what is the return? Set component get component. This will take in an int I. Right, this will, I have to return something, so it's going to return void, uh, return null. Um, oh, why does that not work? I have to put a semicolon. And then finally, public int get component count, takes in nothing. Uh, it just returns zero. There you go. So we just have to put these here because it has to satisfy that it's extending from set component, but they don't actually do anything because it doesn't make sense to call these methods on a leaf, on a number. We still have an underline and that's because I need to implement the sum, right? I need to, you need to be able to call some on a number. And so it has the ma- has the same, like, matching, uh, signature. So it's going to be, uh, what was it in set component? It was a public in sum, okay? So, uh, public in sum, okay, you just call upon this, uh, what it's going to return. Right, return is just itself, right? The, the, not, not itself as in like a variable itself, as in like a class of itself, but literally like the number that's being held within this number class. Just return that. That's the sum. Um, okay, and this is now done with the number class. This is what the number class is going to look like. So now let's move on to set, right? Let's finish up set here. So set will actually have implementations of the add component, remove component, get component, uh, get component count. Those child managing classes, because this is where you actually have the array list, right? Let's first put in the sum, right? So this is a, this is the, uh, method that has to be supported uniformly. So let's put in public in some, right? And this is an important part of the, this is an important part of the, um, composite design pattern, right? Uh, importance, I don't know, important. Um, so is this some method? Well, okay, so it can be, it doesn't have to be exactly some, right? But the point is, is this, the idea that you have, this is the method that's being uniformly supported, right? So it has to be written like this. Um, you have to call that method for all of the children of the, or sorry, for all of the elements of this array list. So in case of a sum here, I'm going to say int, I want to keep track of something, so I'm going to say in sum equals zero, right? I'm going to say for. Set component, uh, component. Elements in elements. Alright, so for every element in elements, um, I want to say some plus equals element dot sum. Uh, and then I, finally, I want to return. So what this code is going to do is it's going to just declare a variable sum as zero. And then for every element in this array list, it's going to call element dot sum. It's going to get the sum and we're going to add that to this running tally here, right? And at the end, it's going to be a, uh, it's going to just be a number. And we can do this because these elements are all set components. And since they all inherit from this set component abstract class, they all have a sum method, right? And this means I can call some on them. So when it is a set, when we're calling some on a set, it's just going to do this method again, but within that new set, right, within that new composite. But if it's calling this on just a number, it's just good, that's just going to return the number because that's what we want to add. We just want to return the value of the number. So the sum method is now done, right? And that's the uniform, yeah, yeah, it is like recursion, absolutely, right? So, uh, you know, when I call, if I have, um, it was, actually, I'll draw a picture when we get to the main method and, you know, I'll show you there. Yeah, you're right. It is exactly like recursion. Um, okay, so, uh, number is done. I just got to fix set. So set is just not quite done because I need to actually override those abstract things. So let me actually put here, I think I'm supposed to put, um, override. Um, I, I don't think it actually makes any difference, but. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. Let me put override here as well. Uh, and I, I guess they should all have overrides before them, but whatever. I won't do that. Okay, so now let's actually override, uh, the child managing classes. So what were our child managing classes? How about instead of flipping back and forth, I'll just split screen this, there you go. Um, so our child managing class, oh, that's the next example. Where are we? There we go, set. So, um, the first one we need is add component. Public void add component, okay? Uh, and, uh, this is going to take in a set component comp as to match the, uh, as to match the, uh, abstract, uh, signature. So we're going to say override this, okay, and add component, well, all it is is you just say elements dot add. That's it. It's an array list. It's very easy to work with. Uh, next one, public void remove component. Component, it's going to take in a set component comp. And what it's going to do, elements dot remove. Um, there we go. That's it. Uh, is that it? Make sure that's, yes, it is. Um, then, oh, sorry, lowercase r though. I don't know why I made that capital. Uh, now, we want to do the same thing, but for get component. So this is going to be a public set component. Component, um, and it's called, uh, get component. So this is, you're going to take in some integer I, and it's just going to return the, uh, I the element from the, uh, array list. So I'm just going to say elements dot, uh, returns, right? Return. Elements dot get, is that the code? Elements dot get, yeah. Finally, we have a public. Public int get component count. Okay, um, and this is going to return an int, so it's just going to return the length of the array list. So we're going to return elements dot size. And that returns the length of the array list there. Okay, so we now have a set class that has all of the overriding of the, uh, child managing classes. And then we also have the, it overriding the sum method. We have, uh, what's it called? The constructor. Uh, we have a number which overrides all these child managing classes because it has to, but it doesn't actually do anything. And it shouldn't be called. These methods should not be called. Um, it overrides the sum by just returning itself, uh, and you can create a number with some sort of value. And then finally, we have a set component, which is this all inherits from. So the last thing to do to actually see if this works is to make a new Java class and call it, uh, client. Composite. Okay, make sure it's in the same package, right? Client composite, it does not be composite, but whatever, just some other client, uh, but again, it has to be in the same package. So from here, we're just, I don't need this anymore. Let me just put this back there. Oh, no, that's not what I meant to do. Um, from this client composite now. I just am gonna, I just have some sort of main file, so let me, again, I'll just show you the main that I put together. So there's the main I put together. We want to, uh, someone's got their mic on again. Dream two eight. I think you got your mic on. Dream two eight. No, no luck? Okay, everybody just turn him down, I guess. I don't, do I have the ability to mute him? I don't have the ability to mute him, so. Okay, so. Let's, uh, here's the main method I put together. So set com- uh, Discord's being weird. Let me open up the chat again. Uh, what chat were we saying things in? It was in five twenty-eight? Yeah, okay, so I have a, I have five twenty-eight open. Set component C one. I'm going to create a set component, which is a set. I'm going to create a set component, which is a set, different sets, okay? I'm going to, um, uh, how about this? Let me just take a screenshot of this quickly. And then, um, uh, just draw what this looks like. So we have a set C one. Okay, which contains, well, okay, I don't know what it contains yet. Then add component for, to C one, I'm going to add C two, which is another set, right? I'm going to add C two, which is another set there, right? To C one, I'm also going to add C three, which is a number, which is the number five, okay? So C three is a number five. They're all set components though, right? Um, because the array list in the set can only hold that components. Uh, so set component C four is another number, which is the number three. So I'm going to add that to C two. So I'm going to add the number three. And then to C two, I'm also going to add the number four. Right, so this is kind of the structure here. So if I call get, uh, if I call some on C one, it should be five plus the sum of this, which is three plus four. So very much recursion, right? You just call it on this here, when it gets to here, it'll just return like a base case. And here, when it gets to here, it's just going to call itself again until it gets to a base case. And the base case is just, um, a number, not having a set anymore. So anyways, we should get, um, uh, uh, twelve out of this when I add all this together. So let's try it. Um, I will, uh, run my client composite. And the sum of all, it's very small, but the sum of all the elements is twelve. So there you go. It did in fact work. And the benefit of this, right, is now that you can, you can call C one dot sum, right? C one dot sum, and it, it, you know, you have this kind of structure where you can build sets within each other and ask certain questions about them and like that. That's it for composite. Any questions about the composite design pattern while I open up the next bit of code? Next one we're doing is state. So any questions, let me know. Okay, sounds like we're good. So, uh, let's move on to our state pattern. Okay, sorry, there's two questions. I mean, there's two people typing, so go ahead and type first. The state I need, um, state. Yeah, that should be. Uh, can I go over the class diagram again? I'm a bit confused by the abstraction. Class diagram like, uh, like this, like how this works here. That's what you mean by class diagram? That's, that's a class diagram, so I think that's, yeah, that's what you mean. Yeah, okay. So, um, so when you call client, when client composite, right, uh, creates these variables, right? Client composite is going to create these, these are the actual variables, like the reference types that we're creating. It'll, when we create them, it'll either be a number or it'll be a set, right? So, you know, numbers and sets are set components. That's the first kind of relationship we have here, right? So numbers and numbers and sets are set components. Okay, so that's the first kind of abstraction that we have. Um, did I, oh, whatever. But then we have this idea here that a set, right, one set contains zero or more set components, right? Like this set here contains two set components, right? And a set component is again either a number or a set itself, right? So this set contains two set components. This set, this set component contains, sorry, this set contains, uh, two set components as well. Of course, it can have more than two. Um, but yeah, so that's essentially the abstraction. We have these, like, something is a, like, so numbers and sets are set components. Sets contain set components. And those are the two kinds of abstractions we have. Did, do we explain that more or how do you feel about that? Uh, and then there's another question. When you call get component count, is it asking for the total number of components under it? Or just the ones that are directly connected to it? Um, just the ones that are dr- just the, just the ones that are directly connected to it. Just the ones that are directly connected to it. Um, but. Let's see maybe how she did in the lecture. Maybe I'm misinterpreting. Let's see. I'll take a look quickly. Yeah, it sounds good that you understood that. Hmm, I, maybe she didn't do it in the lecture. Somebody want to look? Because I don't know, I don't want to spend too much time in silence here. Uh, does somebody want to look in the lecture and see if she did it as, you know, get component, when, when she did the method get component count? Uh, if that includes, if that's like all of the, like, if you said get component count on C one, should that return two? Or should that return, well, one, two, three, four? No, I, I'm ninety-five percent certain it's, it's just, uh, it's just two. Like C two, C one has two components. Uh, if there were any instance variables in set component, would they have to be protected? Uh, if there are any instance variables in set component. Uh, let me look at set component. Set component like this, well, um, he's. Set component, uh, like what, why, why would you want to have an instance variable? Like, I, like, I understand there's such, maybe there's some application of it. Okay, so let's say, okay, let's say each set had some sort of name, like each second point has some sort of name. Um, then. Uh, then what would you say? I don't think they would have to be protected. Why would they have to be protected? I think they would. It could just be whatever. Yeah, I think, uh, it's just got the number of elements directly under it. Okay, so yes, so. Get component count is just the number of elements directly under it, which is, uh, which is what I, I have, which is like, that is how it's implemented here. So it'd only be two. Yes, it would only be two. Okay. Can I try alternative one? Yeah, so essentially, alternative one, I haven't thought about that really, so let's, let's try to think about it together here. What difference would I have to make in how I do alternative ones? So alternative one is, um, removing it from here, right? So removing it from here, let's go through it, okay? Let's, let's mess up the code a little bit and go through it. Uh, did I close everything already? Uh, it's okay, whatever. Oh, no, I don't need government. I need everything except government. Uh, so, uh, client composite, set composite, set number, okay? And I'll just close the rest of these. I don't care about these. There we go. Uh, this is being recorded. Make sure I'm recording. I am recording. Okay, good. Um, but yes, this is, this is. But yes, this is, this is being recorded. So. Why is this not moving now? It's not letting me, like if I click, if I click projects, it covers the code. Okay, whatever, we're here now. So I want to try alternative one. So the point of alternative one is that I remove these guys. I remove these guys, okay? From the abstract class. Keep clicking the wrong window, there we go. I remove them from the abstract class. So let me go to the abstract class and I'll just comment them out. Oops, run slashes. Comment them out, okay? So the abstract class only has the uniformly supported method. What that means now is in my number class, I have no need for any of this. Wrong slash again. Okay? And what that means now in set, why is set giving me an error? Override, there's no override, I'm not overriding anything anymore. Right? No point in saying override. Client composite, we have an issue. Okay, so I'll, I'll deal with that in a second. But these classes, all that's changed is I removed the abstract classes from the abstract methods, which are the child managing methods from the abstract class. And so now number doesn't have to override anything. And set doesn't have to override anything either. It just has to give an actual concrete implementation. The thing is now, in my main method, this doesn't work anymore. I can't just say C1 dot add component C2. I have to specifically say, C1 typecasted to a set, add component C2. C1 typecasted to a set, add component C2. Because add component is only a method that the set class has. Right? So now when I run this, it should work. Still an error for some reason? No, I don't have an error. I think it's just being weird. So I can run it and it builds now, but I have to typecast the set, the, the sets. Yes, I have to typecast the sets to sets because only sets have the ability to do add components, not all set components. So all set components, you can't call add component on them anymore, only sets. So you have to manually declare them as, first of all, they are sets, but you have to actually change the reference variable like typecast it to a set. And because again, that's the only, the only ones that can have add component. But the issue with this is that now you're not treating sets and numbers uniformly, right? That's the thing, like I'm not, like uniformly would mean that I just say C1 here. But now I have to specifically know that C1 is a set and then I have to. Typecast it to that. This is for the first generic structure, this is number one, I think, yes, this is number one. Let me find it, I don't know where I put it now, there we go. Generic structure one, this is generic structure one. I did it before generic structure two. Where would you have to typecast right here? This is right in the main file, that's right. So this is, I did it before generic structure two, but this is generic structure one and. There we go, there's our explanation. Good question though, yes, that's good to, to ask about generic structure one because we might have something similar. Just remember that if you're calling add component on a reference type, right? That reference type has to have that method supported, right? So C1, which is a set component, does not have add component supported. There is no add component method. Do you think they'll tell us what structure to use in the midterm? Maybe, maybe it's up to you. Maybe it's, you have to, they, like you have to tell them what structure you use. Maybe they put a question like that, I don't know. I, yeah, I honestly can't tell you, it like. Could be either. They're essentially equivalent. It's just that with one of them, you have to typecast and with one of them, it's a little bit less safe because you have these methods that don't do anything. And so the, the code might not work exactly how you expect it to, right? These methods are weird, like they, on purpose, like they have to be, they have to do nothing. Why can't we clear C1 and C2 as sets instead of set components? Let me just see here. Because if I declared C2 as a set, so I could declare C1 as a set, that's fine. But I can't declare C2 as a set because only set components can go within sets. So if I declared C2 as a set, then I couldn't put C2 within this set. Because once again, only set components can go into sets. I could declare this one as a set because it's not going into anything, that's fine, right? Doesn't matter. But this one, I could not declare it's a set. And there we go. Yes, second one is abstract, so it can't be initialized, yes. Okay. Any other questions for composite? Otherwise I will move on to state. I'm going to state. So for my state design pattern, I have an example of a player. Right? There is a player. Who can be in one of two attacking states, right? So there's some sort of state variable, right? And it can be in one of two attacking states, right? So we have this sort of abstract state. Class and the two inheriting types that I put are, what do I call it? I called it bow state. State and sword state. Okay? In the bow state, you can call the attack method. Okay? And in the, in the bow state, it says like, you shot a bow, whatever, that's, that's how, that's how it works. And in the sword state, you can also call the attack method. Right? And in fact, we want to be able to just say, let me just make sure I know what I'm saying. Yes, we want to just be able to say player dot attack, right? We want to just tell the player to attack. All right, so attack. We want to have some sort of attack method. This attack method, I'll just show you the code, is just going to say state dot attack. It'll just call the attack method. Of the state, right? So a relationship like this, I guess a dotted relationship, right? Yeah, has, so a player uses a state variable, yeah. I guess you could call it aggregation too, like one to one? No, that doesn't make sense. Maybe I'm wrong, let me, let me check my notes. So yes, actually, they call it one to one, they do call it a one to one. So. The. One player object contains one state. It is aggregation, yes. Okay. So let's go ahead and code this. So let's start this time with the. What should we start with? I don't know what we should start with. We can start with these two. Let's start with the both, like a bow state and sword state. Or maybe let's start with player, actually, I think let's start with player, that makes more sense. So Java class, I'm going to create a class called Player. It's in the same package, it doesn't really matter. And there we go. Player dot Java, okay? So here is my player class. It doesn't extend anything, just a player. The player, right, will have a couple of variables. Let's just give it a couple of variables here, I'll say. Public int health. Public int health, oh, sorry, private, I don't know why I said public. Private int health. Private. Int level. And importantly, for the state design pattern, we need to have a public state, state. Okay, state is a data type that we're going to, you know, abstract data type that we're going to define. But for now, it's just that. And then I need to have a construct, right? So I'll just, I'll just say it's going to take in int, int health. And then int level. And we create the player with this dot health. You know, I'm sorry, this dot health equals health. And you know, why even started with a level, like that doesn't even matter. Let's just say. This dot level equals zero. Say that. And we want to start the player off in some state, right? So I'm going to give it some state, I'm going to say this dot state equals new, I'm going to call it, I'm going to say, let's start in the sword. Maybe you can put that as an input parameter too, if you, if you wanted to, you could say what's, what state should it start in? But let's just say this new sword state. Okay, there we go, there's our constructor. Now, I want to have a public void attack method, right? This attack method. Is just going to call state dot attack. That's all it's going to call, right? Whatever the state is. And then I also want to have a public void set state, just so that I'm able to change the state of the variable. So I'll say state equals yes. Okay, that's it, that's the entire player. We have health level, we have a state, we have the constructor, which just sets the health. And when you create a new player, it's level zero, let's just say, or level one. And this state, this dot state equals new sword state, that's the original state that it's in. And then we have an attack method, but this method just calls the attack method of the state. And then we have a way to set the state to something. So let's go ahead and create the state abstract class now. And if I'm going too fast and you want me to explain anything again, feel free to let me know. Explain happily. So state, a public abstract class. Abstract class, it's going to be an abstract class because we don't want to create a state, like there's no object, we want to make that state. We want to make a sword state or a bow state or something like that, right? So all this has is we want to just enforce that every state has a public abs, has a public void. Void attack. We just want to enforce it, every state has an attack method, that's it, that's the entire state, the entire statement. So now let's go ahead and create. The sword. Sword state. Okay? And then we'll make the bow state. So the sword state just has to, it's going, this is going to extend, extend state, right? And so it now, why am I getting an error? Public class extends. So shouldn't this attack method have a parameter for player? Like, like, like what player to attack, is that what you mean? Is that, that's what you mean there? A little bit of a, someone with a. Kanye West, your microphone is very, yes, thank you, really, okay, good. Yes, if you mean attack method for, have a parameter for player, like what player to attack? Yes, you could have that, but that's unnecessary, like, I'm just saying, make the player attack and it does some sort of attack. Right? No, like that parameter will be used to pass which player we want the state for? Like which player we want to. Like, no, like that parameter will be used to pass which player we want the state for? Like which player we're assigning that state to? Which player we're like assigning the, but attack itself is not a state. Attack itself is a method that's called and the, the way the method works changes depending on what state you're in. State dot attack this. So the attack method itself, my, my idea for the attack method. That will be the actual state class. My idea for the attack method is, is not that like there's any kind of, like you're attacking another player or something like that. It's just like shoot the bow or swing the sword, doesn't matter if you're attacking what. Okay, I, reference player. A reference to the player that called the state. Like if sword state needed to reference something on the player. Yeah, okay, if sword state needed to reference something on the player. Okay, maybe we can add that after, right? Right now, we don't, right? We don't need to do that. Can you explain what the abstract state class does again? Yes, I can, because in the concrete state, you'll be saying attack, attack this. If the, if the sword state needs some sort of access to some information in the player. Then yes, then you need that. But we don't, the, the way I implemented it, you don't, okay, we can add that after though, we can add that after. We can, for sure. But not the way I implemented this. Can you explain what the abstract state class does again? The abstract state class is just the parent of all the states. So maybe you want to have other weapons to have in the game, right? So you would just add a child of the state class. And being a child of that abstract state class just guarantees that there's an attack method. And there's some way to attack with that, you know, weapon in the game. But yeah, we'll, we'll implement something, sword state needs to know something about the player, okay? Sounds good. So the way I implemented sword state. Because that is the only way you can change a state from within a concrete state class. Yeah. Let, let, let me finish typing sword state and bow state and then, and then we'll do some, we'll extend it a little bit. So the way I just did sword state is that we have to override, override, right? Override a public. Public void attack, right? And so the attack is just a system dot out dot print ln. Attack with a. Okay. That's it, that's the whole thing. It just guarantees that the state has some sort of attack method. And then I will add a new Java class and I will, sorry, I should do it in the actual package. Java class. And I can say here that I want this to be a bow state, same package. And again, all I want to do in the bow state is I just want to override the attack method. They override, right? I want to have a public void attack. Right? And then this is just system dot out dot print ln. Attacked with a. Okay. Is that everything? Yes, I think that's everything. Override bow state has to extend. It extends. There we go. So that should be everything. And now what I did is I just, I just made the main file in the, in the player class, like it doesn't really matter. So I'll just say, let's just make some sort of main file here. This is the main that I chose. So there we go. So. Why doesn't it like this? Player P equals new player, oh yeah, I want to. So. Public static void main strings, R, exit it up, player P equals new player one, so that means it has a HP of one, let's just say. Whatever, test, make it better. So we're going to say P dot attack, player dot attack, player dot attack twice, okay? So we're just going to show that both times this will attack with a sword. And then we're going to set the state to a bow state, okay? And then we are going to P dot attack again, it's going to see, you're going to see that we're going to get the reading that it attacked with a bow. So I'm going to run the player. And can't really see probably because it's very small, but it says attacked with a sword, attacked with a sword, attacked with a bow. So attacked with a sword, attacked with a sword, attacked with a bow. And there we go, that's it. Right? Okay. So how about, let's implement here that, you know, you have a certain number of arrows, let's say. So the player needs, has a variable that's going to keep track of the number of arrows. And the, the, the bow state, right? Bow attack, what do I call it, bow state? Bow state, needs to know how many arrows you have, right? So I'm going to say private int arrows, right? I'm going to make a getter, right? I guess, I'll just initialize it to five or just say three, just to make it small. And I'll just make a getter method, I'm going to say public. Int get arrows. Okay? And return. Arrows. So we have a getter method for the arrows. So now, when I go to the bow state, right? I have to ask, right? I'm going to say if. If, okay, I'll just put in a comment here, right? If the player has enough arrows, right? Then do this, right? Then attack with a bow. But else. Right? I'll do system dot out dot print ln. System dot out dot print ln, not enough arrows. Okay. So now, how do we check if the player has enough arrows? Well, one way we can do it is we can send in the player object, right? I can say a public void player P, right? And I can say. Here. P dot if. I just said if already, if P dot get arrows. Right? Is greater than zero, right? Attack with the bow and then. Oh, I guess I have to also set the arrows. Let's just say, let's just say, I'll say. Public void lose, lose an arrow. And I'll just say arrows. Arrows, arrows. So then what we want to just do in the bow state is we Um, so then, what we wanna just do in the bow state is we just wanna call P dot lose an arrow. Okay, uh, why is else, else without an if? We do have an if. Why do we have no if?
You gotta close the if with the curly bracket.
Ah, yes, thank you. Okay, doesn't like P dot lose an arrow, so why does it not like P dot lose an arrow? Oh, that was semicolon, okay. Thought it was some bigger error. Uh, okay, and then override doesn't work anymore. Uh, override doesn't work anymore. Oh yeah, okay, because then, because this class needs some sort of access to the, the player object. So maybe, uh, you'd have to, yeah, so you, we'll probably just have to actually adjust that in the actual, uh, state class, right? So it's gonna, they're always gonna take in a player P, right? They're always gonna take in a player P when they attack. So that's probably common that states need information about who called the class. Um, so I'll just say player P. Um, but like the sword state doesn't use it. It's fine, doesn't have to use it, right? Uh, the bow state, uh, P dot get arrows, why does it not like P dot get arrows? Cannot find symbol. Location variable type P. P's right there. Why does it not like it? You know, there's an arrow. Cannot find symbol. Oh, okay. Uh, you know? I don't know what I did. I clicked enter and it worked, so. Let's see. Um, and then, uh, the only thing we left, we have to do is in the actual attack method, we wanna send itself in, right? We wanna send the actual player in. So, okay. Should we get? Why do I have an error here? Override state. No, it's overriding. Player P. Why is this not overriding? Method does not override or implement from a supertype. It's extending state. Public void attack. Public void attack. Player P. Player P. It is in fact extending. I'll enter. Remove annotation. Okay, what is this not like? Does not override the attack method, but it does override the attack method in state. There is the attack. Public ab- did I spell something wrong? Public abstract void attack player P. Public void attack player P. Save the files? Okay. Uh, sword state's fine. Why is player state wrong? What does player state? Lose an arrow. Void lose an arrow. Oh, this is some sort of, that's what generated in the thing. Oh yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's what generated just now. It might update. Okay, bows, okay. Okay, now it looks like it's okay. Everything looked like it just fixed there. Good, okay. Um, so now, I will run the player and we attacked with a bow, okay, but I, I can't see, uh, how many times I attacked with a bow, so let me just attack with a bow. One, two, three, I'll attack four times. So now, when I run the player, not enough arrows. It's the last one, not enough arrows. So there we go. So, if you need your all, if you need all, if you need all or any of your states to know what object called it, right? Which player, maybe, is attacking. Very common to need that. Then what you want is you want to be able to call, you know, player dot attack, right? Player dot attack. And what that's gonna do is it's gonna call the attack method on the state. But the state requires the, uh, pointer, the reference to the actual class that called it, which will just say state dot attack this. Right? So this is the object that is calling state, that is calling attack on its state. And then in the actual states, you can use the, the player that was put as input, like here we used it, uh, but in sword state we didn't. It doesn't, you don't have to. There we go. So, yeah, thank you guys for suggesting that we, we do that, cuz that's good to, good to note too, yeah, it's great. So technically not necessary if none of your states use the player. But, probably that is very, that seems very common to need to do that. Okay. So, um, let's move on. That was our state. I think it worked perfectly. Yeah, that was our state. So, let me just check. Everything's working here. Yes, good, okay. Good. So, um, let's do the last one. The last design pattern we have is observer. So observer, uh, where did I put it now? Here, this is the, these are the ones. So let me, let me just open them up quickly. And then we can talk about what my idea for observer was. I'll close that. Okay, so the observer, I need channel. I need, uh, observer. I need subject subscriber. I think that's everything. Yeah, that's it. Okay. So, let's begin with the observer. So the observer example I have is that you have some kind of, you know, YouTube channel, right? So let's say there is some YouTube channel that's here, right? So I'll say, I'll, I'll call it just a channel, right? Uh, the channel has the ability to upload. Okay, upload. A video. Uh, the channel is what's called a concrete subject, right? A concrete subject. Something that actually sends information, like it has the information, right? It has the ability to upload. I have also a bunch of subscribers. Okay, so, uh, subscribers. Let's say I just have a, you know, subscriber class. Subscriber class, right? And it has the ability to be updated, right? Or like, you know, a notification is sent, right? I'll just call it update. Right? Uh, but like, you know, you get a notification on your phone, right? That's, that, that's what that method would do, right? When we upload, the subscriber should get an update. So we do this by the observer design pattern. We create these, uh, abstract classes called subject. Okay? And observer. Okay? So, these are the abstract observers, abstract subjects. This is the concrete observer, observer, concrete subject. And, um, we want to be able to, um, you know, subscribers, let's, you know, attach them to the channel somehow by subscribing, right? So the subject has some sort of attachment. Case there. Dream28, you got your mic on? Do you have a question or? No. Think you just have your mic on. Dream28. Okay. Again, probably, probably everybody has him turned off at this point. I will, I have him on 26 because I have a slight feeling he might ask a question, but we'll, we'll see. I don't think I'm able to mute him. Anyways, so, we are going to implement these four classes to do exactly this, right? So a subject, uh, let's see how the relationships should look. I wanna just remind myself quickly. So, a concrete subject inherits from the subject class. So this is, remember, this is called a concrete subject. This is the subject class. Then, a subject, one subject has many observers, right? One, two, well, one to many, right? Um, and subscribers inherit from the observer class. And that's it, there we go. That is it. So, you can somehow, you know, you can relate these two. You can say one channel maybe has many subscribers. Um, and maybe we'll implement that a little later. Maybe that'll be our little extra thing that we implement. It's just that relationship, but that's actually not necessary. It's not necessary to say that. It's true, but it's not necessary to say that. But we can do that. Let's just print out, let's just implement this and then I can add that. Just like an array list and then it calls through subject, but whatever, we'll talk about that. So, to implement this, I am going to go to live code. I'm going to create a Java class. And I will call it a channel. So. So the channel, channel is going to be one of our subjects. So I'm gonna say this extends subject. A subject is a class that we're gonna create. Um, so, so I'm gonna just put as a code here, uh, as a comment. Uh, this class represents a con- create subject. Okay. Uh, does the abstract observer also have an update method or is it only the concrete one? It's also the, the abstract one has a concrete, sorry, the abstract one has a update method, but it is not concrete. Like you don't have a, let me make sure I, that I actually did that. Yeah, like you don't have an implementation in it. It's an abstract method. Just to guarantee that all of the children will have a way to be updated. That's what it means to be an observer, is that you are able to be updated. Uh, so yes, yes, an abstract method. So, hopefully that makes sense. Um, so the channel will have, importantly, the ability to upload. That's pretty much all that matters, is that it has the ability to upload. Okay, we give it a name, give it da-da-da. It doesn't really matter. Sure, you can give it a name. Um, but I won't even make a constructor, cuz we don't even need that. Let's just say it just has the ability to upload. Public void upload. Uh, and let's say it can upload, it can take in some name, right? Some name of some video. Uh, doesn't channel also have lots of observers? So yeah, that's what I was mentioning here, that it has, you could make a relationship between these two. I will implement that after. First, I'll just implement it like this, but yeah, channel could have an array list of subscribers, right? Which would be this aggregation relationship like this, but it isn't necessary. So we can do it without that. But I'll implement that after. Uh, won't channel have a state variable? Uh, this, so, okay, so the state variable is essentially what I'm doing it for the state variable in this example is, um, is upload. So upload is the state. Either, like, so, it's not really a state, but it's more of like, uh, this is the method that's being called. So instead of like having a set state, when, when you, maybe when you do a set state on another object, it's gonna update all the observers, right? So, so like this is the set state, right? It's just that I'm, instead of like changing a variable, I'm just uploading. It's just a one action, right? It's just one action. But you're right. We can implement that after too, yeah, for sure. We can put that into. What is the advantage of the observer? Well, it just means that, uh, subscribers can just be added to the array list, right? Sorry, uh, do you mean of the observer design pattern or the observer actual, uh, class? Design pattern. So the idea is just that, uh, you can just attach subscribers to the channel and then have just one line in the upload that just says, um, that just says, uh, you know, notify all, like, notify all observers. And all the observers will get the notification. Right? Instead of, instead of having to call, you know, observer one dot update, observer two dot update, observer three dot update, right? You just do it to all of them at the same time, in one line. And observers can be attached or detached. And yeah. Hopefully that'll make more sense when we actually get to the, uh, when we get to the main method and you'll see how we actually use it at the end there. Um, yeah, okay. So, uh, channel, right now, all I wanna do is I just wanna say system dot out dot print ln, right? Um, and, da, there we go. And I'm just gonna say, uh, new video uploaded. And then I'll just add the name that we put in, that we put in there. And importantly, I want to call a method which is notify, no, notify observers. There we go. Right? Notify observers. So, this method right here is going to be inherited from the subject class. So subject classes have the ability to notify observers. Okay, so I wanna do that when I upload. I wanna notify observers. And this just means that all of the observers will be notified that an upload came. Now, if I want information to go with that notification, okay, then we'll, we'll deal with that after. But right now, I just want all the observers to just be notified that I uploaded a video. That's it for the, the channel, right? We just want the ability, no, no instance variables or anything, talk. Let's move on to subject. Okay, so, uh, subject, I'm gonna add a new Java class. I'm gonna call it subject. And uh, why does it do this? Well, cuz it's useful sometimes. Okay, so, uh, abstract class, right? Subject is an abstract class. Okay, and, uh, the, uh, the, oh, sorry, I clicked the wrong one. Subject. There we go. Uh, it will have an array list of observers, right? Again, observers is gonna be another abstract class that we've created, but we are gonna need an array list of observers. So I'm just gonna say, uh, import, import java dot util dot array list. Um, and then from here, I want to create an array list which only contains, um, observers. Servers, right? Uh, I'm gonna call this observers. And it'll be a new array list observers. Okay, so, the subject will have, uh, a ray list of observers called observers. We want the subject to be able to attach observers, right? Attach subscribers to the channel. So, uh, public void attach. Uh, attach observer O. So we wanna attach an observer. All that's gonna be is observers dot add O. Then I also want to be able to detach, right, observers. So a public void detach observer O. Oh, scared me. The Discord sound. It was Discord sound. Was it? I don't know what Discord sound that was. Anyways, um, so, the, uh, detach observer O, again, we just want to, uh, say observer dot, uh, remove O. Um, and then finally, we want to have the method which is notify observers, right? That's the, that's the, pretty much the main thing. Public void notify observers. Right? Uh, and so, the way you do this is you just say for observer, observer, observer O in observers, right? Uh, for all of them, right? You just want to say O dot update. And so, all of the observers should have a way to be updated, right? All of the observers should have a way to be updated. That's an important thing. So this is what it means to notify all observers, just call update on all. Sorry, that's supposed to be. Okay, and that is it for the subject class. So now, let's continue. We're kinda moving in this direction. We did channel, we did subject, let's do observer, and then we're gonna do a concrete observer. So, uh, from here, uh, I will do the, uh, where is it? Live code? That's not what I meant. Live code, Java. I'll create an observer. Okay, so the observer will also be an abstract class. Okay? And all we want from the observer is we just want to guarantee abstract void. Abstract void. We just wanna guarantee that all observers have a way to be updated. That's it, this whole thing. Okay, all observers have a way to be updated. So, now, let's create an observer. Right? The observer will be a subscriber, right? Subscriber. So a subscriber, okay, uh, you know, has, let's say, a name, right? So, uh, string name. Okay, uh, let's say I have a constructor subscriber. Uh, the constructor takes in a string name. Let's say, uh, and just, uh, this dot name. This dot name equals name. Then, we want to override, right, the update method. So, uh, public void update, right? We want to be able to be updated. And all that is, is I'm just gonna say system dot out dot print ln. Uh, I'll just say, um, name plus hat has been, uh, has seen the new video. And that's it. The subscriber just has to, I just gave it a name, like, you don't have to give it a name. I don't know. I just gave it a name so that we can see in the, when we run it, the different names that show up, like, so it's different observers. Um, and otherwise, uh, that's it. You just wanna override the update method. That's the important thing. So, now that I have this, I have essentially all that I need, right? This is all the classes that are here. Why is override not here? Oh, sorry, subscriber has to extend, extends, uh, observer, right? There we go. Now we are updating. Okay. So, that's it. That's all the code. I'm just gonna go to the, um, I'm gonna go to the channel and I have, uh, so notify observers is still not here. Notify observers, why is that? Subject? Uh, observer. Observers, I should say observers. Um, notify observers here.
Yeah, I just had a quick question.
Yeah, go for it.
I was just curious why, um, subscriber couldn't just, uh, extend the subject as opposed to like going through observer first?
Well, the thing is that the subject, the subject is, uh- Well, the thing is that the subject, the subject is uh, has an array list of observers, right? The subject is what controls, how do you keep track? How do you attach and detach the uh observers? So, okay, so you're saying there could be just an array list of subscribers, right? Is that, that's your suggestion is that there could just be, yeah.
Could they not be just removed from the, that um class itself?
Yeah, okay, you're right. In this case, that would work. Um, but you, a lot of the time have uh, uh, different kinds of observers. Right? So you could have subscribers, but maybe you also have like apps that need to be notified, right? Maybe you also have to like say like, okay, subscribers need, or like, maybe you can say uh subscribers through email and subscribers through text. Those are two separate observers. Right? And you still want all of the, you still want all of them to be called. So you just want an array list of observers, which then have it called. It's organized like that.
Oh, and then you can specify from there. I see.
Exactly, yeah. Does that make sense? Make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, yeah, question?
Yeah, sorry.
No problem.
Is there a chat box? Like I can talk?
Yeah, yeah, in COE five twenty eight, uh, on, there's a chat that says COE five twenty eight. No problem. But also you can unmute if you want to unmute. Okay, so there we have uh the subject. Let's just go to the channel and, okay, notify observers. Okay, fixed now, good. Uh, let's just uh take a look at the uh. Main that I created here. So the main, I'll just, again, I'll just do it in uh, in channel. So uh, public void mainstream arg. So I create a channel. I created a subscriber Tom, a subscriber bomb, and a subscriber womp. And I, and I attached a uh, subscriber one to the channel. Made my partner laugh here a little bit. Boom, Tom, boom, and womp. Channel attach sub one, channel attach sub two, uh, channel that upload, cool new video. So you give it a title. Did I? I gave it a title. Yeah, that's true. I gave the, when we go to the channel class, uh, string name, uh, upload a new video, you give it a name here. But notify all observers. So all of these observers should be called except subscriber three, right? Which is the attach. Because they're not attached to subscriber three. So let me call uh, channel. Is that what I want to call it? Yeah, channel, live code, yeah, run, uh, run anyway? Okay, so new video uploaded, cool new video, right? Uh, Tom has seen the new video and bomb has seen the new video, right? But um, the uh, the last one subscriber three has not seen the new video, right? That wasn't called there because it was not attached as an observer. Uh, okay, so the code works. Uh, let's edit it a little bit here. Uh, what's the error in subject? I don't think there's an error in subject. It's just showing that for some reason. Oh.
Can you explain again why womp didn't see the video?
Uh, because here at the end, uh, because I never attached this one as a subscriber. Because you have to attach the person. These are subscribers, right? Maybe it would be better to call them people, right? They're just people. And then when I attach them, they become a subscriber. But until I attach it, right, it's, it's not a subscriber.
I see.
Right? And so it will not be updated when I do channel.
Alright, got it.
Okay. Uh, so you see his underlink is never called. Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, correct.
Channel is the, is the, is like. Okay, for the subject, we're having a one-to-one relationship with the observers itself, yeah, correct?
Yeah, like one, one to many. The one subject can have many observers.
One to many.
Right? One subject can have many, yeah.
But we have the main and the channel. Can we just have a new class and just make it?
Sure. Yeah, sure. That's fine. You could make a client that calls the channel, yeah.
I was just gonna ask if you're gonna post the code after.
Uh, I can post the code. I don't really know. I guess I can post like the TXT files. Yeah, I guess I can post the TXT.
If I can like copy and paste it into.
Sure. Yes, I'll do that.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
The um, update uh method, which is, the update method would be in one of the concrete observer uh classes, right? Do we, I, I don't know if this is correct. Don't we have to, um, when we call update, not in the. I, I guess you'd have to change it in both the observer and in the uh, in the subject, but don't you have to um? Uh, pass the uh, the cl, uh, the, the um, object of like the thing that you're trying to update from?
Yeah, the concrete object, the, the concrete subject, I mean, concrete subject.
Subject, yeah.
Subject.
You have to pass the concrete. So I thought you had to put like update and then in the brackets they had this, right?
Okay.
To pass that. I don't know if you have to. I've just.
Yeah, yeah. So I know what you mean. So we, I didn't have that here because the update method doesn't rely on any information from the subject. From the concrete subject.
Oh, that's right. That was just to up, to if you had to update, like get, uh, if you had to get a certain information from the.
Exactly. I'm gonna implement that now though, because that's an important thing. So I'm gonna implement that. Let's say the channel has, uh, I don't know. Let's say it has, the video has some sort of. Let's say the channel subscribers and the, the update method needs the number of subscribers for some reason. Okay, so we'll, we'll include that now. What channel is recording going to post it to? My channel. Uh, do I have a link to it? I don't know if I have a link to it. How about I make a link to it?
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, of course. Yeah.
So why don't we have a get, uh, getter method in like the channel class?
In the channel class? Well, I don't, I don't have any need for, there's no instance variables. So there's no need, there's nothing to get. There's no instance variables. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But actually, now, now I'm gonna implement that. I'm gonna put like a, a, like a subscriber count or something like that, or maybe something else. I don't know. I haven't decided yet. But maybe a total number of videos or something like that, yeah.
If you can just correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, so what we took was that we have a setter and getter method? And we usually have the setter method calling the notify, then the notify calls all the updates, correct?
Uh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. That is one way that the observer is uh, is used a lot, yeah. That the setter method calls the notify observers. Yeah, no problem. So how about I'll edit this code. Thank you for sending the link to the channel. Thank you. How about I'll edit this code a little bit. So now instead of just notifying that a video has been uploaded, right? Let's say I will say uh, maybe like the most recent video, I'll say uh, uh, private. Private string uh, recent title, okay? And then here I'll set. I'll set uh, recent title equal to name. Right? So the most, the title of the most recent video will be set to this upload, whatever I've uploaded, right? And now I want the observers to actually say the name of the video, okay? To actually say the name of the video. So that means that the uh, the subscribers, right? Name has seen the new video. No, no, no. I want to say name has seen the video. Video. And I'm gonna say, well, uh, I need to figure out the name of the new video, right? So I'm gonna get the most recent. I'm gonna get the most recent video from the channel. So what I have to do in the channel is I'm going to have to make a uh, public. Public string. Uh, get recent title. Title, okay? And it's going to return recent title. It's gonna retain, return the name of the most recent video, okay? Then when I call notify observers, I'm gonna pass in the channel itself, okay? So notify observers is gonna take this, right? And I'm gonna put this, oh, I guess, sorry, I can't say this. Sorry. I'm gonna say uh, notify observers is gonna take in um. A uh, subject. Yeah, subject S. So I'm gonna put in that S into update because channel extends subject, right? So it's gonna put a subject, notify observer is gonna take the subject, it's gonna send it now to the observers. The observer is going to take in a subject S. Okay, good. Um, and then finally, the subscriber itself will take in a sub subject. S and the name of the video will be S dot uh, get recent title. Okay, so let's see what it doesn't like. Uh, get recent title. No, I think I just need to save it, honestly. I think it's gonna work. Something, something needs to update. I don't know what needs to update, but I think it's actually gonna work. So what is it now like in subject? Uh, I didn't fix this yet. Doesn't wanna tell me. Reached end of file without parsing. I don't know what that means. So. But it works. If it doesn't even know what that means. Oh, is the bracket error?
Yeah, I think you just needed an extra one for the notify observers.
Yes. Thank you. Yep, there we go. Uh, and then subscriber doesn't like this still. Why does it not like this? Method get recent title. So the subject S. Yeah. Issue with the inheritance here. So I guess I have to send in. An actual channel. I think you're doing it from the channel. Don't pass subject past channel. Yeah, I have to sub, I have to send in an actual channel. It feels wrong for some reason, but okay, yeah. So the issue here is that the subject abstract class has no get recent video or get recent title method. Channel has a get recent title method. I could add a get recent title method to this, but that wouldn't really make sense to do that because. Why not? It wouldn't really make sense to do that. It's better just, we have a get recent title in here. Oh, it wouldn't make sense to do that because then this wouldn't get the title from the actual channel. Uh, the channel has the actual title. So what I need to do instead is still pass in this in subject. We're not taking in a subject. We're taking in a channel. A S, uh, and that's fine. And then observers, we're again, we're taking in a channel S. Okay, and then finally in here, we are taking in a channel S. And so get recent title works there. Okay, so we have to actually send in the channel, the concrete subject. Now I think we are ready to go. I can run the channel class. Uh, channel Java, run this. Where did it go? Is it here? There we go. So video uploaded, cool new video. Tom has seen the, seen the video, cool new video. Bomb has seen the video, cool new video. So yes, there we go. So the two people here, sub one, sub two, still sub three, has no update because it's not been attached. But now sub one, sub two not only are updated, but they actually get the information, right? They actually get the information of what the recent title is, okay? What the most recent thing is. And you could save it to a variable here. Like, if you wanted your subscriber to use the title for some reason, uh, you could save it then into an instance variable or something. And so there we go. That is now. Implemented. Okay, uh, there's nothing really else I wanted to go through. There we go. We have the uh. Went through all four different design patterns, did like a full example coding one. So, oh, I cannot hear you. No. I cannot hear you. Is that because of me? You're not in the call. Oh, you're in the call. I cannot hear you for some reason, but keep trying. And if I can't hear you, just uh. Just uh, just type in the chat then. Okay, well, uh, yeah, that's, that's, that's pretty much it. I don't, like, I don't really have anything else to say. We went through all these things. So uh, I'd just be here for some questions. I'm happy to answer some questions. Um, can I cover UML, UML symbols? Uh, yeah, sure. Uh, I think we can still use subject. Okay, so you think we can still use subject? I'll get to your thing, Ethan, for sure. Uh, let's just see. But we need to downcast. That makes sense? That makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, let's do that. Let's try that. Subject. I'll switch these back to subject. Um, I'll switch this back to subject. I'll switch this back to subject. And then here at the end, I will say, uh, at, yeah, like I should do if S is instance of, but like, I know it's an instance of, so. Uh, I'm gonna downcast S. Downcast S to channel. Okay, that did work. Yep. That's good. No error. Very nice. So thank you for that suggestion. Uh, that's good. Uh, so yeah, so it can be a subject. That makes more sense. It, it, I, I really felt like it should be a subject there. Um, so yes, it is. And so you just downcast your channel. Again, yes, you should have a if S instance of channel, but whatever, I'll do that right now. Okay, and then uh, yes, can we cover various UML symbols? Yeah, so. I mean, you pretty much got them all there. Plus is just gonna be public. This applies to instance variables or methods. Minus is gonna be private, right? And uh, well, I didn't see the amp, I didn't see the at sign. I saw this for protected. No, no, sorry, I had the hash for protected. That's what I remember seeing. And you just include that in the UML there. Uh, yes, we will do deep copy and shallow copy. It's an example of that. But I don't know, I don't, I don't know what else. Uh, yeah, I don't know what else to say about this one. Is there something I'm missing? Is there something, is there a particular question, Ethan, that maybe you had about these ones? A deep copy and shallow copy. Yeah, for sure. So. Oh yeah, and relationships too. Okay, let's quickly look at relationships just quickly with the UML stuff and then we move on from the UML stuff. Uh, let me find it here. So I mean, this arrow with the uh, uh, I have to remember now. I gotta be correct with what I'm saying. Let me find my notes. Protracted relations with AF and RI. Oh, obstruction function and reppin variant, yeah. Yeah, okay, we can talk about that. Uh, so let me just go through quickly. This is this with the filled in is inheritance. Okay, this is uh, implementation. This. Is aggregation, so, you know, between, so let's say one car has four wheels, right? One car has four wheels. And that's it, uh, dependency. So this, uh. Should this be a open? No, this should be a filled in one. So implementation should be a filled in one. And then dotted with an open one is dependency. So inheritance means inheritance. Implementation means implementation. Those are pretty self-explanatory. Uh, this is like an array list. You have an array list of certain types. Dependency is like um, you have a, um, you use a method. So this class uses a method from this class. Like a paragraph explaining the class and these variables. And I felt like it was kind of weird. Okay, we can go, maybe we can go through that too. Shallow and deep copy. They are not too bad. Essentially, if you have a class, like, let's see if I can come up with an example, some sort of class, like point and circle. Obviously, that the teacher did, right? Um, so we can say. I can do zoo with animals. I can do that, I guess. Zoo has a certain, a certain animal. No, maybe I'll say um. Okay, let's do, let's do this. This, I don't know if this will work, but let's say frame. Frame is a class, okay? Uh, one frame contains one, whoops, contains one painting. Okay, uh, painting is just a collection of pixels, right? Let's just say. So it's a, uh, it is, uh, it only has. Primitive data types, right? So let's just say it's just some sort of color, right? So if I were to make a copy of a painting, right? Let's just, let's just implement. Let's just do it. So if I go to live code, I'm going to create a Java class. I'm gonna call it painting. So a painting, let's just say, is just a number. Like, let's say it's just some value. Like, maybe it's just a bunch of values. I'll just say. Private int color one, uh, color equals two. Let's just say that, whatever. The painting is just some color. Then if I had some kind of uh, main method, right? So if I had a uh, public static void main string arcs. There we go, right? And I created some uh. Painting P equals. New. Painting. Then we have, okay, I guess let me give it a constructor, I guess. So just quickly say uh. Public painting. And I. Um, color equals I. Okay. So, and then just put two in. There we go. Same thing, but just, I just added it now. So now let's say I want to have a, another. Painting, let's say. Painting. Painting P two, that costs P one, right? Which I want it to be the same painting, but I don't wanna ref, like, so if, if right now I say painting P one equals P two. That's fine. They're just both referencing the same painting. But if I were to then adjust, let's say I'm, I'll, I'll make a setter method, so. Um, uh, public. Uh, void set color. Equals to int I. Right, color equals I, right? So, uh, if I were to set the color of painting P two, or painting P one, I would also set the color of painting P two. And that's not what we want. We wanna make some sort of copy, right? So, um. Uh, I have to remember the exact way to phrase this. I have my notes here luckily. So, uh, can I search a method? Uh, where do I go through clone method? Okay. So. Clone, override. Okay, so. If you wanna be able to clone an object, you need to implement clonable. Okay? Uh, implements clonable. Um, so now from here, we want to override. Override, um, the clone method. Public. Public painting. Clone. Rose. And so it has to throw. A, uh, clone not supported. Supported exception. Okay, and so now we're gonna implement the clone here. Right, we're gonna implement the actual, like, doing the cloning, but. Um, what kind of cloning do we do? Do we do a deep clone or a shallow clone? So a deep clone is needed when some of your, some of your instance variables are mutable. None of the instance variables are immutable, right? This is an immutable int, right? And there's no, uh, there's no set here, right? Um, so, uh. If there was a set, let me think for a second. If there was a set method. Then that's also fine. Sorry, none, okay, let me be clear here. That's actually not what, true what I said. Uh, you need a deep copy if some of the instance variables are. Reference to mutable. Mutable objects. There we go. Our reference to mutable objects. None of the instance variables are referenced to mutable objects. So we are okay. Everything is fine. So, um, I can just do a shallow copy and what that means is I just return, okay? Um, uh, and this is the, this is the syntax. You just say, uh, you typecast it to. Painting and it is a, uh, you say super dot clone. I think I missed a bracket in my notes there. Super dot clone. Um, and this should. Yeah, this should work fine. What does that take in? Um, clone not supported exception, clone not supported exception. Uh, what is it not like? Declare, did I spell something wrong? Clone not supported exception. Uh, there's no brackets at the end. Uh, and throws. Yes, there we go. Perfect. Yes. Okay, so there, that's all the, that's all you need to do for the, um, uh, cloning of a shallow copy. So this is a shallow copy clone of the painting, because the painting is just a color, right? There is no, uh, instance variable which is a reference to a mutable object. But now, if I wanted to, for example, put this, uh, in a frame, right? Let's say I put this in a frame. So first of all, let me just quickly say here, you know, I can, I can make a new painting P two, which I will call as just, um. P one dot clone. Right? And painting P two will have, uh, a certain color. Why can't I? Do this. Oh, do I need a try block? Uh, it doesn't like it because it's throwing the exception. So I guess I need to have a try block here. Try. Um, uh, try this. Uh, I need to, uh, catch. Uh, exception E. Uh, whatever. Do I have to actually put code here? Yeah, don't have to put code here. Okay, thank. Now it works. Just because this, because this clone method throws an exception, I have to do something in the main method, so big. I guess I could say throws here, but whatever, doesn't matter. Um. So now this will work. Painting P two will be a copy of P one, and you don't have any issues. Because, uh, there's, there is no instance variable which is reference to a mutable object. Um, let me also say, public. Public. Um, int get color. Uh, and it's just return color. Right? So now when I go here, I can say, uh, am I in the right? Yeah, I can just say, uh, system. System. Dot out dot print ln. Uh, and I'll just say, um, the color. Of painting one is. P one dot yet color. And then I'll do the same thing for painting two. P two, P two, okay. And they'll be the same color. Run. Uh, run. Okay, didn't like it for some reason. So painting one is fine, painting two, Java, uh. Erroneous to type any Lego painting main. It returned one. Okay, so didn't like the second line, P two. Cannot find variable P two, right? There's a variable P two. Uh, did it? Did it? What does it mean if variable is a reference to a mutable object? Okay, I'll explain that in a second. Um, why is it not running? So it doesn't recognize that P two exists. I tried implementing, that means it keeps giving me an error. You think it's in the try, that's why? So like it doesn't guarantee. Is it throwing the exception? Can I say system? Dot out dot print ln. Uh, exception? Like, is there actually an exception that's being thrown here? It's fine. No, there's no exception being thrown. Um, so it's just in this block, so it's not there. We have to understand the clone itself. Put everything like S out. Put everything out in the try block, out of the try block after that call should be two. Oh, 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 put, put this there. Yes, okay, that makes sense, yes. Okay, that worked, yes. Um. How would you do that if you didn't wanna do that? To do all, like, now we have to do everything in a try block. Would I just say? Would I just say throws? Can I just say here, throws? Throws, um, clone not supported exception?
Uh, I think you can just put a. Try catch in the clone itself.
Oh, try catching the clone itself? Mm-hmm, that makes sense.
Cause if you put throws in the main, for the main, it's going to give you an error, because it's not going to be able to throw to anything.
Okay, so. I'll just say, yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, so maybe here, instead of throwing it here, I'll just say, try. This block of code. And just catch. Exception E. In which case I wanna say, uh, system dot out dot print ln. Whatever. Uh, exception. So now we don't need the try block. Makes sense. There we go. Okay. Perfect. That worked. Uh, declare, uh, declare painting P two outside try and then do P two dot clone. I think it's actually the dot clone that needs to throw the exception. So that was the issue. So I think that. It wouldn't work, but yeah, that's good. Um. Okay, so there we go. We have a shallow copy of the painting. We are, you're able to make a shallow copy of painting. Okay, fine. Let's now make a object. Let's make a frame object, which is gonna contain a painting. Okay, a frame object which is gonna contain a paint. So, uh, new Java class, I'm gonna call it frame, right? Frame is immediately, I'm gonna say, private painting. Uh, P. Say, private painting P, okay? Um, it will have a painting object as one of its reference types. And then maybe we'll say, um, uh, private. Private int year, you know, maybe it's some year that the frame was made. There we go. Um, so let's make a constructor for the frame, right? So to, to make the, uh, frame, public, uh, frame. I'm just gonna take in an int or I'll say painting, painting P. And an int I, okay, and I'm just gonna say this dot, uh, P equals P and, uh, uh, year equals. Equals I. There we go. Alt shift F. All right, thank you. I will use that from now on. I appreciate it. Um, so, uh, we've created a frame. Okay, now, I also wanna be able to clone, so implement clonable. Um, I also want to be able to clone the frame, right? But the thing is. Uh. What's the thing? Hold on. Clone the frame, make a new object. I changed the. P, yeah, okay. So. If I. Have a. Point object radius. Object. Painting P, change the painting P, okay? So. Uh, I don't really care about the year. Doesn't really matter. Um. Uh, okay, this is fine. This is fine. Now, I wanna make a, well, let's make a shallow copy of it first and see what's the issue, right? And then we'll, we'll go from there, right? So I want to say, okay, I'm gonna make a bad shallow copy here, like. We shouldn't make a shallow copy because one of our reference types, one of our instance variables is, um. Referencing a mutable class. So someone asked that, what does that mean? So this is an instance variable. It is referencing a class type P, painting, type painting. Painting is a mutable class because I can set the color. Right? I can set the color. No problem, no problem. Um, I can set the color, so it's a mutable class. So frame has an instance variable which is referencing a mutable class. So I need to make a deep copy. But let me show you first why we need to make a deep copy, right? Let's do a shallow copy and see what the problem is. So override. Uh, public. Um. Frame. Clone. And, uh, did, did I have throws in here still? No, I don't have throws in here. Clone, I, I just get rid of throws from there. Uh, return. Um, frame. Super dot. So. Uh, uh, this is ready for the try block, sorry. Uh, try. This. Uh, catch. Exception. Exception E. And system dot out dot print. Print ln. Um, and then I'll just put whatever after, um, except. I forgot to close brackets. Yes, what did I forget to close brackets here? Yes, thank you. Thank you for that. And it looks like I forgot to close brackets here too. Close, no, that looks fine. Uh, why is this? Oh, I had to return frame, that's why, okay. So, uh, now, a- and then I guess now I just say return. Why did I not say return for this one? Did I say return? Oh, yeah, yeah, I just say. Yeah, I did return. What's the issue? Why is this mad at me? Uh, alt enter. Add return statement. I do have a return statement. Catch.
Maybe even if you catch the exception, you still have to return something.
Oh, it even said that here too, actually. The error is also here. Yeah, okay, so like, let's just not, like, there won't be an exception, so we don't have to worry about that. There won't be an exception in this example here.
I think that's why you're not supposed to. I think that's why it has to throw the, the.
It has to throw it.
It throws the exception in clone. You can't, you can't catch it in the clone method because what are you gonna return then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Nothing. You're not gonna return anything. Um. I mean, I guess I can say here, return. No. And now it should not be mad at me. There you go. Okay, return no. I'll put that here too. Return no. And now it won't be mad at me for not returning anything. So, um. This is bad. This is a shallow copy which is bad. Okay, so it shouldn't, it, it doesn't, this isn't gonna be good. Because now, when I make a main method, okay, I'm gonna make a main method here. Uh, I'm in the same package, yeah, okay. So I'm gonna make a, uh, public, static, void, main. Um, string arguments. Uh, it's fine. Then I'm going to, first of all, create a painting. So painting P one equals new. Painting. With a color of two, right? Uh, painting P two equals, well, no, I don't, I don't need the painting. Okay, so then I'm gonna say. Frame F one equals new frame. Uh, do I need a thing? Yeah, I need to put a painting, right? So the first thing I'm gonna put P one, and then I'm gonna put a year like seventeen hundred. Okay? Then I'm gonna say frame F two equals F one dot clone. Okay? And then what I'm gonna do. Is I want to only change the, uh, let me make sure. Okay, now I want to change the painting that's in frame F one, right? So. Uh, no, not change the painting that's in frame F one. I have two frames right now. One is a clone of the other. So if I do system dot out dot print ln. And I say, uh, the painting. In F one has color. Um, and I say, um, plus. Uh. Uh. I have to look at the code here. Set center. A one dot clone, A one dot set center. Okay, uh, in my frame, I need to have a setter method. So, um, public set. Here, uh, public, uh. Void set. Painting. Painting P. Okay, um, this dot P equals. Okay, so now I'm able to set the painting. Uh, yes, come. So now, if I say. F one. Dot that. Painting. Uh, I'll create another painting. Let's say I'm gonna create another painting right here. Let's say we have two paintings. Painting P two equals new painting, which has a color of, let's say, six, right? Set painting to P two. Right? What we want is that if I say system dot out. Dot print ln. And I say the, the color of the painting in frame, frame F one is. And then I'm gonna say plus. Uh, F one. I guess I need a method here that says, uh. Set circle. Yeah, okay, I, I need another method here, I guess, that says, um. Uh, public void, uh, get, get painting color, right? Uh, I guess it's gonna return public int. Okay, so public, I don't know, uh, return. P, is it P, P dot get color? I don't know if I've actually implemented a get color in painting. I have implemented get color, okay? Now, the color of the painting in frame F one is F one dot get painting. Color. Okay? Um. Uh, and then I'll do the same thing for F two. Is F two, is F two. So. Let me do this there. When this runs, we have two paintings, one with a color of six, one with a color of two. I'm gonna create a new frame, P one, made in the seventeen hundreds, whatever. I'm gonna clone that, okay? And then I'm just gonna say they both have the same, uh, I'm gonna get the painting color. They should both have the same painting color because I just cloned it, right? But then I'm just gonna. But then I'm just gonna change, this is only change the painting in frame one, right? And so we would hope that this has the original, sorry, the F two still has the original painting in it. But F one has the new painting in it, to pe, painting two, but you will see that that isn't the case. If I run frame, right, oh, that that is the case, so what happened? Uh, and then my example is wrong. Oh boy, okay, uh, what happened? This, I got two, two, six, and two, so two, two, I changed, I set the painting cuz I'm adding too many methods, that's why. The thing is, her code in the example didn't have the, didn't have the text part. Which that example worked, let's see, let's see what she said here. Where was it, it was in data abstraction? And then we have the clone method. I know, that's all repo, okay? Looking for the clone method, that she did. Question? No? What hap? Oh yeah, okay, don't, no problem, should we try catch block with the clone method, or should we just do it the way she taught us instead? Uh, just do it the way she taught you instead, with the throws, yeah, just do it like with the throw like that. Why did this not do what I thought it was gonna do? We are taking F one dot get paint color, F one dot get paint color returns P dot get color. Set painting, oh, set, no, 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 this is, this is fine, okay, 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 okay. This is fine, that should have done. Now, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take P one, which is in frame one, and I'm going to set the color of this to int, uh, to, to uh, whatever, uh, a hundred, let's say. Now let me, before I say anything, and it's wrong again, let me, let me run it, okay, so let me draw this out. We have that, we have frame F one, sorry, we have painting P one, painting P two. P one has a color of uh, two, P two has a color of six. We are putting, we are putting uh, F one, the frame around P one, and F two F two, the frame around P two. Okay, um, well, actually, to be clear, uh, uh, sorry, sorry, that's, that's, that's not right. We're putting, um, we have P two over here, right, F two is another frame, we're cloning F one, and turning it into F two. So F two also has P one, which has a value of two. Right? Now, if I take P one and set the color, it's gonna change both of these paintings. Right, it's gonna change both of these paintings, the colors of both of them. And so we see that F two and F one are not detached anymore, right, they're not actually detached, they're not actually like independent clones of each other. They are still attached, because P one is a mutable data type, so you see that now, when I say P one dot set color, both frames have a different color, isn't color int type like immutable, yeah, int is immutable. P one painting is mutable, painting is mutable. It's because they share P one, right, so F one and F two are aliases, uh, yeah, well, they're different, F two and F one are different objects. But they both contain the same painting variable, P one, their, but their painting variable is, are both referring to P one. So if I were to create a little diagram for this, right, I would say this is F one, right, F one has a, has a year. Right, which is seventeen hundred, and it has a painting P, right, which is pointing to P one. P one, which has an int, uh, what did we say, int two. F two is a separate frame, which also has a year of seventeen hundred, but its pointer variable is also pointing to P one. And so these are not independent clones of each other, right, clone, we want them to be separate objects, so F two should get its own version his own version of P one, right, it should get its own version. So what I did originally is I um, I said, uh, I just changed the painting, I just said F one dot change painting. I just changed it to a different painting P two, we don't need P two, P two isn't helpful here, in this example, P two doesn't make any difference. Okay, um, so that's why I used P two there, I did, that did. So what we wanna do, now that we can see that, you know, we, we need we can't just do a shallow copy, cuz shallow copy makes that, makes it that F one and F two are not independent of each other, okay? They're not independent of each other, they, they should be though, we need to do a deep copy. So I will open up my notes and go to the deep copy, and so the way that we do a deep copy is we want to, when F two is created, we wanna create a new painting object, right? Uh, which is a clone of P one, I, I guess I'll call it P two, I don't know, just another painting object, which has an int of two. So that now, when I change the color of P one, it does not change the color of F two. So the way we actually do that is um, in the so in the frame class, we do this same, uh, where are we, the same line, okay? But what we do is we say, um, yeah, we don't say return, we say frame frame F equals, we say, frame, uh, sorry, F dot I guess, F dot set center, uh, it's not, it's not set center, sorry, set painting. Do I have a set painting method, yeah, I do have a set painting, I have to set the painting to be a painting center dot clone, yes, um, P dot clone, there we go, so this is, I'm saying, and then I wanna return F. Return F, so this is a deep copy, because I'm creating a variable F, which is the new frame. It is a clone of, it, it is a clone of this frame, which just clones all of the instance variables, right? But we specifically want that the, the painting, F dot set painting, we need to set the painting to a new object, a new painting object, right? And I'm gonna do that by just cloning the painting that was already here, so I'm gonna clone the painting here, uh, clone this one to create a new painting, right? And with the same values though, and I'm gonna set F, I'm gonna do set painting on F to that. But, and I use the same syntax as before, this line is basically the same thing as when we cloned in the actual painting class. And then we return that, and that's that, okay, that took a little bit of a fiddling around, but hopefully that makes sense. So there's your comparison, deep copy, shallow copy, why one, you need one rather than the other. No problem, I'm, nice to see, okay, well, he's gone now, but okay, guys, that is pretty much my time for today, I do gotta get going, it's eight thirty now, um, but hopefully you found this helpful, I will post the recording as soon as possible, um, and if you have any more